I've got my phones, I'm gonna have to turn it off.
What's that?
I've got my phones, I'm gonna have to turn it off.
Okay, okay, okay. Put your sign on the phone, uh.
Yep.
Some of you, some of you tried to call him. Let's call this regular city council meeting order eighteen hundred hours, February twenty fourth, twenty twenty-two. Uh, roll call, first item, uh, everybody's here with the exception of, uh, Councilman Wolford, are you on the phone?
I am.
Okay, we've got Councilman Wolford on the phone, Councilman Marsh is excused as he is out of town at the time, and the rest of us are in attendance. I'm gonna turn you up just a little bit, Kip, so we can hear you.
Thank you.
Okay.
There we go, I think we can hear you now. Okay, item three, pledge of allegiance.
Yes, I do.
Yep, I can hear you, you're good. Okay, we'll have, uh, item three, pledge of allegiance, led by Councilman Dixon, and then the invocation by Pastor Holmwood.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic from which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. O God of justice, mercy, and love, we thank you for the gift of life and the opportunity to serve the people of Holbrook. Help us to speak with love and respect toward others. Give us a spirit of service as your son Jesus had. Guide us to be the leaders your people need and deserve. Please renew with us the strength of your presence and the joy of having to build a community worthy of your glory. We ask this as your sons and daughters, confidence in your goodness and your grace and your love forever, amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Pastor.
Thank you.
Moving on to item four, we have the consent agenda. Chair will entertain a motion to accept the consent agenda as presented.
I agree.
Have a motion, you have a second?
Second.
Motion in a second, all in favor, any co- comments or questions on it? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We've got a aye from Kip, too. Item five, call to the public for non-agenda items.
There are none.
We have none. Item number six, call to the public for agenda items.
There are none.
Hearing none, moving on to new business, discussion and possible action. Uh, seven A, Navajo County Fair update, uh, Mr. Sample, the Fair Board President has graced us with his presence, he's gonna give us an update. Mike, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the council, appreciate, appreciate you giving me the opportunity to come and just kinda give you an update on what's going on. It's going to be a busy year, so in January at our annual meeting, we approved a lot of events that are gonna happen, and I think we only have one open weekend in July throughout the year. So we have, um, barrel races, our normal barrel race series that's going on, we have some new, um, events coming in, we have a, uh, it's called S-Hart Junior Rodeo Association, they're starting to put on a junior rodeo series here about every other weekend, and then we have Arizona Junior Rodeo Association coming in April. In May, we have the Arizona Junior High School Finals and the Arizona High School Rodeo, that's coming in May fifth through the eighth, and that's gonna bring about four hundred kids and their families. Um, again, we have, um, the livestock, Salem Livestock Show coming up, the other Route sixty-six livestock camp and show, amongst, um, some other rodeos that have booked our, our, our facilities to put on some different rodeos throughout the year, Team Ropen's going on, and then our, our fair's gonna be September fourteenth through the seventeenth this year, and then the following week right after that, we're gonna have Arizona High School Rodeo Association. So it's a year full of big events, and it brings a lot of people to our community, so we just wanted to say thank you, look forward to seeing you at these events, and thank you for our support, and if you go by and see all the horse trailers and, and people that are there from, there might be a handful that are from Holbrook or this area, but the majority of them come from all over the place. So the events that are put on here, um, bring people to our community, we just wanna again, look forward to work when you're, working with you, and thank you for the support that you've given us over the past few years, and hopefully you'll continue to support the fairgrounds again, even though it's the Navajo County Fair, Holbrook is, is the community where these events are held, so, and thank you for all the support, and also the staff at Holbrook, the city, street department, um, Tim Kelly that comes and helps out, different things, um, we appreciate all the staff that helps out as well, so thank you for your support, and, um, if you have any questions.
Anybody have any questions for Mr. Sample?
How do we get this advertised where people see it all the time?
Um, well, we have our website, we have Facebooks, of course, social media, and if you know Michelle Stock, our event director, she puts everything on social media that we're having, and, and, and our, the Navajo County Fair's website also has calendar events on there. Um, maybe we can get with our local newspaper and start advertising for the events as well, but.
How about our billboard?
Yeah, we work with the chamber, we have worked with them in the past in putting stuff, so we'll get with the chamber on putting that as well.
I think everything needs to be out there.
Oh, definitely, that people know that we're having those.
People that ask me, how come they don't have this advertised, how come we can't find this, how come they don't have it on this billboard?
Well, we'll make it known that, make sure we get it out there.
Cause there's a lot of people who watch it.
Right, exactly, our first, we had the first junior rodeo last weekend, and it was a big crowd, and everybody was excited, a lot of people from the Navajo Nation that came down because a lot of things aren't happening up there, so it's just bringing people down in our community for those.
Good job.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
And that's what I wanted to say, I, I'm amazed at what you all have been able to put together, and I really appreciate it. I know you work hard, and I know your board works hard, and Michelle, she's a magician, so. So anyway, we do appreciate you, and, uh, you always have my support.
Thank you.
Yeah, and the, the last fair, I think, was amazing, I mean, the amount of people that we had, uh, where the vendors, the food vendors were, it was just wall-to-wall people, and it was a great thing to see.
Yeah.
You guys did a great job.
We got a good reputation, and when we talk to different fairs, when we have our Arizona Fair Association meetings, a lot of people come up to us and ask us, how do we do things, and they use us as an example, so.
Good, that's great.
Good, thank you, appreciate that.
Thank you, Mike.
Okay, don't go too far.
Okay, moving on to new business, item B, reappointment of Mike Sample to the Planning and Zoning Commission. Planning and zoning commission is comprised of five members appointed to a four-year term, presently there are only four members, one vacancy. Per city charter section two zero five, qualification of the mayor and the council, appointment, the mayor shall appoint members to various committees, boards, and commissions after due official notice to the public with the consent of the council. At this time, the mayor would like to reappoint Mike Sample to the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Do you want my consent?
Do you want us to give you a vote of approval?
I believe we do need a vote, do we need a vote, or?
Just consent.
Any, any opposed?
I, I consent.
No, no. No one gets their right mind on Mike Sample.
So be it noted that, uh, reappointment of Mike Sample to the Planning and Zoning Commission, Mike, I appreciate that as well. Stretching yourself then and then, but hey, we, we appreciate everything you do for the city, thank you so much.
Appreciate it.
Moving on to item C, ordinance twenty-two dash zero one, first reading regarding sale of real property, parcel number four oh three dash oh five two three five. This is a sale of property in Snowflake located at forty-five oh six Mountain View Road, Snowflake, Arizona. This parcel was placed up for sale for a minimum bid of five thousand dollars. One bid was received by a Stanley S. Prog for six thousand two hundred and fifty-one dollars and one cent. Recommendation is the approval of the sale of this property, so this is the first meeting, we'll vote on the, uh, ordinance on the second meeting, on the second reading, correct?
That's correct.
Can, can we ask questions, Mayor?
Yes, if you'd like to.
That seems really low. Is it a building lot, is it a?
So this is a, a residential lot, we are required to and did receive value for that property, it's actually valued at thirty-one hundred dollars. Thirty-one hundred dollars, and we, our asking price was five thousand, higher than the value of the property, and the property owner came in with even a higher value.
Okay, to, well, cause you already see the sign going to the Snowflake building lots thirty-nine thousand dollars, so.
Yeah, that's a real estate, that's, we're required to do that, we can't sell it for less than it's valued at.
So we had an estimate and.
And we asked higher than the estimate.
And we got even higher than that, okay, that was my question.
Any other questions?
Yeah, just comment, if you look on, uh, the, the parcel search, it's vacant land way out on, about twelve miles out on Concho Road, east of Snowflake. I don't know how we used.
Oh yeah, it's Ranching the Golden Horse, I saw that.
I don't know, how, I don't know, how we even obtained that property.
So, in, in a little history, you may recall, we sold it before for twenty-five hundred dollars, and the, the property, the people that we sold it to never finished any of the paperwork, so we went from twenty-five hundred to six thousand.
Okay, okay.
Don't know what that. Okay, moving on to item B, approval of, uh, Corral located at eight sixty-five Navajo Boulevard, zero zero six, bar license, ownership, transfer application. And actually, just for the, uh, record, I believe, hmm, what was the name?
Pofilia.
Casa.
Pofilia Lang, there, uh, it's the current, current location of the Corral is going to be called Casa Ricalia. I believe that's the way it's pronounced, so, uh, let's see, I guess.
She also owns, owns the Ben, Ben, Benavides.
She owns the Buenavides.
And the knife shop out at the truck stop.
Knife, she, knife shop out at the truck stop.
And the Holbrook Mercantile.
Holbrook Mercantile, and they also purchased the old Print Place Building, so we've got people investing in buildings in Holbrook, so.
Good.
Anyway, the chair will entertain a motion to approve the, uh, license.
So move.
Second.
Motion in a second, comments or questions on it?
They've been so responsible with all of their dealings and their liquor licenses, I, I can't see a single reason why not to accept this one.
Right, so, okay, we have a motion in a second, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed?
Aye.
No opposed, okay. Moving on to summary of current events. Uh, saddens me, uh, one of my ex-stepbrothers passed away, a lot of you may know him, Vernon Lewis. Passed away, Ralph Lewis's son, he passed away the, uh, yesterday, I believe it was, I found out from his aunt, uh, here in town. And also, I'd like to inform everybody that hasn't seen it on Facebook, that Michael Dell's services, they're doing a family and close friends service at the mortuary on March third at six in the evening, and then there will be a memorial service at the cemetery, March fourth at one P M, for anybody wishing to attend. Also, this past week, uh, manager Soltis and I met with a liaison from Mark Kelly's office, came in and, and gave us quite a bit of information, it was kinda nice having her here. Had a lot, had good, good talk with her, Ted may have a little bit more on his, on his agenda, but I'm going to, uh, I would like to, uh, kinda put something out there to the citizens of Holbrook, I appreciate what you've done, I work hard to try to do the best I can for the city of Holbrook. There is a small group in the city of Holbrook that apparently does not appreciate what I do, and they have issued a recall against me. Now, I'm going to read to you exactly what was put in to City Hall as reasons for the recall, and I want you to pay close attention to what these are, because I'm quite disgusted when I read what the editor of the Holbrook Tribune puts in there, and she embellishes the truth considerably. The reasons are, Mayor, Mayor, Mayor Merrill Young has failed to lead the city council in creating a strategic plan. Unfortunately, many high priorities and needs have been neglected over a number of years prior to hiring the city manager Ted Soltis and my election as mayor. The city of Holbrook has an old official strategic plan that still provides a lot of guidance, but it, it, it is on the list to be updated. In the meantime, city manager Soltis is working on foundation building, which has been neglected for many decades. He successfully worked on a lot of aspects of the city business and the ci- city business and city benefi- the city is benefiting. Budgeting, which allows expenditure for capital items, various departments, stabilizing of the city's enterprise fund, cleaning up of the city, updating city hall, the city gym, city community center, the city parks, there's a lot of work going on over there, and the cemetery, we, we've been able to expand the cemetery. Also giving em- uh, employees raises, paying down the debt of the very large police retirement system. The second thing that was brought under their allegation was, under my leadership, under, under his leadership, he has allowed city manager Ted Soltis to manipulate, disregard proper procedure and decorum to the detriment of the city employees. And I have no idea what he means referencing city manager fault, in my opinion, city manager follows procedures, has a percent, professional decorum, whenever residents bring complaints, either to myself or to other council members, Ted was, is quick to respond, every action that has been taken to city, uh, to Ted has been taken care of and will feel is moving Holbrook forward and all resi- for all the residents, not just a select few. The third allegation, Young has allowed relations to degrade with outside municipalities and organizations, and has elevated the mayor's office above what is authorized by the charter. The city manager and I have a good relationship with all the area municipalities, we retu- return, return, excuse me, routinely attend Apache and Navajo County Mayors and Councilmen's Association meetings, and as I mentioned, we met with a liaison from Senator Kelly's office, we're working with a lot of stuff that is gonna move city Holbrook, city of Holbrook forward. So I'm not sure what they're talking about as far as I'm degrading relations with outside municipalities, and I'm not sure what is meant by me elevating my position above what's authorized by the char- charter. In review of the charter, the list of the duties of the mayor in section two dash oh seven, I faithfully executed the duties of the mayor as listed. Chairperson of the council, voice and vote in council proceedings, head of the city government. The mayor shall recognize the head of cit- be, recognize the head of the city government for ceremonial proposals and the governor's purpose of martial law, and shall execute, but, shall have exit, uh, executive, but no regular administrative duties. Appointment to the mayor, mayor, mayor shall appoint members of various committees, boards, commissions, which we did this evening. Furthermore, in the appendix of the charter, under the code of ethics, elected officials, advisory board members, I can honestly say that I'm proud of the way the city council, city staff, and myself conduct ourselves in meetings. Anybody that wants to, you're encouraged to watch him and judge for yourself. Fourth, through his leadership, Young has allowed city manager Soltis to understaff city workforce, eroding the safety and morale of city employees and residents of Holbrook. This is what was turned in, I beg all of you to look at what was posted by the editor of the newspaper. In my opinion, what she is doing is she is putting out an intent to deceive the people in this community, and I'm not, I'm not happy with it, I don't like it, and it needs to stop. Uh, as far as that goes, there's been no safety-related positions eliminated. The city has, city employees have retired, the workload has been assumed by other staff members, the salaries, savings has been used for giving pay raises, repairing and replacing equipment, paying for minimum wage increases, as all of you know, this year we had to increase everybody's minimum wage. Health insurance goes up almost every year, we have to use that money to make, uh, to, uh, provide health insurance and other supplies. This minimizes the need to increase the fees, the rates, the taxes. City manager Soltis summarizes all of his decisions, or, yeah, all of his decisions during the budget process. All the citizens can read his annual message, which serves as an introduction to the year's budget. The fifth one, Young facilitated and canceled the twenty-twenty-one election cycle and extended the terms of his office and that of council in violation of the city charter. First off, I did not facilitate that, okay? The cancellation of the twenty-twenty-one election cycle, based on the direction given by the state to consolidate elections, resolution twenty dash oh one was passed, which states the city desires to participate in the county consolidated elections to increase voter turnout as prescribed by Arizona revised statute sixteen two oh four oh one A. Furthermore, ordinance twenty-one oh three outlines reasoning to conform with state law for consolidation of elections. And if you all remember, as it says, I facilitated this, it was voted on by the council, and I believe it was unanimously passed. Young has reached beyond the charter duties allotting the mayor and giving himself responsibility to approve financial activity in concert with Soltis. Resolution nineteen eighteen states, two signatories, one elected official, uh, being the mayor, and in his absence, the vice mayor, and one staff member, the city manager, and in his absence, either the city clerk or the finance director, are authorized to act for and on behalf of the city in any matter involving the city's depository accounts, any further authorized sign on behalf of the city's implement for the name of the city, the, excuse me, terms in all agreements, instruments, drafts, certificates, and other documents related to the depository accounts, or other business, city included. But not limited to payroll agreements, repurchasing agreements, night depository agreements, fund transfer agreements, safe deposit agreements, and this procedure was put into place to limit the possibility of fraud. Because when I came here, prior to me showing up, these procedures were done by a literal rubber stamp. The mayor, the previous mayor that was recalled was still signing checks with a rubber stamp when I took over office. This is, this is not proper, and if I believe right, this was a main suggestion and one of the things we got docked on through our auditors. Finally, Young has allowed scheduled council meetings to be canceled, ignoring the many needs facing the city. In addition, Young has given Soltis the authority to control the city agenda. Per city charter, only one meeting a month is required, and per city code, the city manager sets and presents the agenda to the council. The city charter section two dash one three A states, the city council shall meet at least once a month, and Holbrook city code one dash two dash three states, the city manager shall prepare an agenda. The few meetings that have been canceled were either because the city manager was out on business to meetings or for holidays. And nothing, none of, none of the meetings were missed that caused any detriment to the city. And I, I would just like, you know, ladies and gentlemen, if we continue this cycle, every time this small group gets upset and they wanna have a recall, they wanna have a recall, we don't like the mayor, we don't like the city manager, whatever their reasons being, if we continue this cycle, I guarantee you, you're gonna be very hard-pressed to find people that are even interested in sitting in these seats up here. We have an election this year, there are gonna be three council, uh, seats open, how many have you had taken out?
We've had one to, one packet taken out.
Okay, we have three seats open, ladies and gentlemen, we have three seats open, and we have one packet that has been taken out. My suggestion is, come in and put yourself here, don't put yourself on Facebook, put yourself up here, be the solution. A lot of people said, why did I take mayor? I took the position, this mayor position, because I'm a lifelong resident here. I've seen what's happened in this city over the past thirty years of working for the city, and I believe we can make a change, we are making a change. People say nothing's happening, if in fact, you would pay attention, listen to the council meeting, last council meeting, manager Soltis gave a list of all kinds of things that were happening, and he also mentioned that we have people looking at this town, we have investors that are interested, but unfortunately, they've asked us not to divulge any information at this time. Things are happening, but if we continue this cycle, I guarantee you, nothing's gonna happen. And if our negative aspects in the newspaper, the embellishment of negative connotation, you know, local people are not the only ones that read this paper, and if you got investors that are reading this paper, what do you think they're gonna say? I ain't going there, not if that's what's going on, so, I just like everybody to read what the editor of the paper put in there. And I will add one more note, her and a few other small, uh, people in this community are the ones that are spearheading this, uh, recall against me, and let me, let me remind you one thing, the editor of the Holbrook paper does not even reside within the city of Holbrook, she lives in Joseph City. The owners of the Holbrook Tribune do not even live in Holbrook, they've moved to Oklahoma. So, I would leave it up to the citizens of the, uh, community. If you so allow me to stay in this position, I will continue to work every day, as I have in the past two and a half years. I've missed one meeting since I've been here, and there hadn't been a day that I haven't missed coming in, meeting with the city manager to find out what's going on. And if somebody wants, somebody else wants to do the job, then, you know, you can, you can sit up here and let people throw rocks at you. With that, with that, I'll. Now, move on to, uh, Councilman Dixon.
Um, well said, Mayor, thank you, and I have to, um, tell you that I, I am proud and honored to serve with you. I, um, think you're a very good mayor, and you, you were spot on with everything that you said there, and I have never for one day regretted hiring, uh, Ted Soltis as our city manager. He's done an excellent job, and, um, that group of people is bent on getting rid of people who, uh, are doing a good lawful job. When I read that article, I, I, I sought for the propaganda that it is, thank you, Mayor.
Vice Mayor, please.
Well, I've lived in Holbrook for close to forty years, and most of that time I was employed by the Tribune News, and as such an employee, I've been familiar with all of the mayors that we've had during that time. Most of them were friends of mine, good people. Uh, some came close, but Merrill is far and away the best mayor we've had.
Thank you for that.
He, he, I, I told you this when I called you the other day, and it doesn't mean much unless I say it publicly. So, uh, I don't know what more we can expect of him. He comes in every day to see what is. I don't know what more we can expect of him. He comes in every day to see what is going on. To see if there's something he can do to help with it, to see if there's something else that needs his attention. Whatever. I don't know of anybody who's ever done that. But that's really just one thing that he does. So, I, I'm disappointed in the recall and. I, I told another friend of mine today, I have never signed a recall petition in my life, not even even makeups. Because my feeling was always that. You know, get up, if, if they've broken the law, get them. Other than that, they hold that position lawfully. And it's, you can't just change your mind, you know, or especially those who didn't even vote. Are trying to cancel out your vote with a signature on the recall petition. So, that's, you know, I wanted to sign that, that makeups really bad, but it just. You just can't do that, so, and I understand that recall is a lawful way to remove someone from office. But I would hope that that does not happen this time.
Thank you, Frances. Councilman Dip- or Councilman Nelson?
First of all, I've lived in Holbrook thirty nine years, and during that time, I think you're the best mayor we've had. That I, and I've known almost all the mayors. I used to be a scout leader. And for them to get their citizenship in the community, all the little boys would come here and sit. And at, and, and you, you in my estimation are the best one we have had in the thirty nine years I've lived here. I'd like to point out two things. In every single agenda. That there is call to the public for non-agenda items and call to the public for agenda items. Today, in our audience, in our vast audience, there's one man, Mike Sample. Where, where have these people been with their complaints? We're here every two weeks, one month at lea- once a month at least. Where, where are these? There's gonna be disagreements in agendas, right? I mean, you, we're all individual people, we're all on the different scales, liberal to conservative and whatnot. But you're the man we elected, and while you're in this seat, we're. We're gonna follow your agenda as it goes, and it's gonna be different than each one of us. And anybody writing in the paper and anybody forming committee on Facebook. And I, I myself, I just wanna say that I support you. And I, I think you've been a wonderful mayor and I'm, I'm, I'm sad to see that we're wasting resources. To hold a, an election that I don't think is necessary.
Well, it's gonna be on with the primary.
It'll be on, it'll be on the primary.
So, we don't have that expense, okay, and I'm grateful for that, but anyway.
Thanks, thank you, Mike, I appreciate it. Councilman Castro?
Good job, Mayor.
Thank you.
First of all, I wanna apologize to everybody that had missed the last meeting. With all these friends that died and all things that were going on and I. I woke up Friday morning and I said, I got a meeting tonight, and I said, no, I gotta go pick up my grandson, it's Friday. I missed a meeting. I just spaced it with funerals, friends dying. Relatives dying, I just spaced it and apologized. But good job, Mayor, and I think our council's doing a good job. Anybody else out there wants these jobs? There's the papers in the office, go run for it. Don't put in the paper that we're doing a bad job. I hate to read the paper. I don't like negative things. I never signed, as Frances said, she never signed a recall. Neither have I, although there was one that I wanted to sign, just because of his attitude sitting here and what he said, and I probably could have. Had him thrown off of what he said, but I've signed his petition. Thank you.
Thank you.
Could I add one more thing? I, I forgot to say that Ron Scorsese's funeral is tomorrow at eleven o'clock at Elliot's Church. And he was a survey in our area for a long time, and I meant to say that before, but I forgot, no problem.
Thank you.
Um, I was up at the Hermos Overpass, uh over I forty earlier today, watching the Freedom Convoy come in. And I was talking to a gentleman and I said, oh, the city manager doesn't do anything. I said, why do you say that? Goes, well, that's what I've heard. I said, have you been to a council meeting? No. Have you looked at the council meetings online? No. Have you read the agenda or the, the minutes from our meetings? No. I said, every single council meeting. Ted, city, city manager Soltis briefs us on what he has accomplished. And what he is working on, every single council meeting. This man is, and, and Mayor Young. Are, are dedicated to the city of Holbrook and they do the job and they do it tirelessly. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. I guess I almost forgot about you, Councilman Wolford, not sitting here. Almost forgot about you. I'll go ahead and give you the floor, sir. Councilman Wolford, are you still there? Apparently we've lost him.
I'm sorry, I had to mute.
Okay, okay, go ahead, I'll give you the floor.
Alright, first off, I apologize, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilman, uh for not being there this evening. And I hope, I hope, I definitely will be at the next one. Anyways, uh so my apologies. Um, and I am glad for technology that I can uh sit in on my phone and do this work. I, unfortunately, I'll refrain from any comment on uh this article in the paper. I, cause I missed a lot of the rebuttal uh mayors that you were giving because of the breakup in the phone. So I don't wanna do that. Um, I uh, I, I would like to make a comment about. You know, uh media, um. The press, uh, the constitution, very first amendment. Is uh freedom of the press that our forefathers did for us. And that was a way to keep leaders in our communities check. So, I, I will always support our media for that purpose. I know we've lost our radio station, I'm sure it could be is lose our local newspaper. Because it's a very important uh source of information for our community. So I, I hope that may be, uh Mayor, uh I see a rebuttal. Uh in the next paper, letter to the editor, um so you can get your position out there. Like I said, I didn't hear it all, um but I would like to hear uh the rebuttal you have to the article. Uh today was the first day I seen that article or even heard anything about that, so, um, yeah, and. I think uh right now our city council is running very well, great mayor, the city manager's been doing very well. I'm uh, you know, every other week meeting with him and getting that information update and stuff, so. Really grateful for that. Um, and I think, uh, and I tell this to the. Uh city manager all the time is just the transparency and when people don't know what's going on, they seem to. Shoot from the hip sometimes, um, but I encourage all citizens. To attend these meetings, you know, and, and that's probably the biggest heartbreak of sitting there. Uh in the chambers, not seeing the public out at these meetings, getting involved and asking the questions. Uh directly to the council, so, um, I, I look forward to getting. Seeing this getting resolved, um, but as far as I'm concerned right now. Uh everything's uh running smooth, uh we're seeing progress, we're seeing prosperity going on in the community. Um, like to give a shout out there to Mike Sample, um with the county fair. Um, I have no doubt that it's going to be another great uh year. Uh actually better, I'm sure, we don't have this pandemic restricts, uh restrictions going on. Like we did last year and there was a fantastic year last year for the county fair under the management and guidance of Mike Sample and his staff. So, I'm looking forward to getting out there, providing whatever support I can uh for these county fair members. Um, and on that, that's all I got.
Thank you, Councilman Wolford, and as far as by rebuttals, I would hope that uh the newspaper, paper will do their due diligence. And print the rebuttals as they were presented to the city. And that way you will see, I'm not gonna bring it up anymore. I believe I've expressed my feelings. I've expressed what uh our city charter and our city code says, so hopefully the paper will do their due jo- due diligence. And post this as, as it was presented. Moving on, we will go to uh city manager.
Mayor, thank you. I wanted to say, uh, by far you're the best mayor I've ever worked with. You really do an excellent job.
Thank you.
Um, as the mayor has said, he's in my office every day. He's got years of experience in our community, as an employee, as a resident. And that's really valuable. That makes it difficult for people to make up stories. They're not gonna pull the wool over Merrill's eyes, cause he knows what's going on, and I really, really appreciate what you're doing, and of course, thank you, council. And with, as was mentioned earlier, we've got a very diverse council, yet a team. Everyone works together on this council, even though the, they range the full spectrum, and um we're really fortunate to have the team that we have. Thank you, council, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, City Man.
Um, uh, let me let you know, I've got a drawer for, full of grants. Uh, we've received another grant. Uh, this is a Water Infrastructure Finance Authority, WIFPA, grant for two hundred eighty nine thousand five hundred dollars. This money will be used to defend the city's water rights. I also got an email today, it looks like we'll be getting. Will have opportunity to apply for another grant for some more money in addition to that particular grant. What am I doing? What am I working on? I've started the budget process, started it a little bit earlier than I normally would. Cause of the significant cost increases we're experiencing. For example, health insurance went up ten percent. As you know, you, we talked about minimum wage going up, but eventually that has an impact on all staff. You can get to the point where as minimum, minimum wage increases, you, you, you get to employees that have been working for the city for a number of years, so. That affects the whole uh process. Um, cost of living's going up, so I am worried about uh where our costs are going. Fortunately, we've been very conservative with how we've been budgeting, so that we'll weather the storm. Um, and we'll be in good shape, but just so you know, that's, I've been hiding out in the office lately, really working on that whole budget process. Uh finally, as uh the mayor did mention, uh Michael Dell's funeral is on March fourth at one P M at the cemetery. Uh but also after uh the one P M uh service at the cemetery, they're gonna be meeting over at the Methusic Building across the way at two o'clock. Uh Robin had called me up uh the other day, uh many, many people are coming from out of town, so she wanted to provide. An additional opportunity for people to get together and so forth, so again, that's uh one o'clock at the cemetery on March fourth and then two o'clock. Uh at the Methusic Building uh across the street there. Mayor, council, that's all I had, thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor. Thank you for your work. I, I guess I go in your office every day, I see that stack of grants that you're working on. Quite impressive.
May I say one more thing?
Yes, Vice Mayor.
I'll go back to my report. I read an article that um. Part of the infrastructure bill that was approved. Uh on the federal level included, I think thirteen billion dollars for water rights, tribal water rights. They were things that were already in the works, so our problem was not there. But at least one of them, that I remember, did have to do with Navajo Nation and their Gallup. I think maybe there were two, but I can't remember what the other one was.
But it's not the same, unfortunately, the same water rate situation.
No, it's not the same water rate situation, but it's the same tribe.
Right.
And.
Right.
We got very close when, when John Kyle was a senator and he was a senator like. Like Merrill's the mayor, he, he paid really good attention to his constituents. At any rate, and, and to prove that I, why I always liked him better than John McCain, though I had a lot of respect for McCain. When Paul Barker's wife passed away, he received a handwritten letter of condolence from Senator Kyle. And when uh Norton Friedman had been a, you know, he was a big fundraiser for the Republican Party. When he passed away, uh about a year later, McCain's office. Um, called to see if he would host something for them, so it just seemed to me like. John paid attention to the little guys and he put together a package that nearly went through, but fell apart at the last minute. That's been quite a while and I'd like to see something move forward a little faster than it has been.
We are really hopeful. Uh, I think timing is right. That was the message over and over again when Senator Kelly comes by, need to work on those water rights. Uh and I'm, I'm really hopeful. I really think this is, this is the time to take care of this situation, and all the communities feel the same way. We're all in the same boat, and this is really, I think, the time to take care of this, and especially with that bill, I just read about that one today too. Um, I, I, I think this is gonna be the perfect timing.
Thank you, Frances. Okay, moving on to item nine, submissions written, efficient. Item's not on the agenda. Item ten, adjournment, chair will entertain a motion to adjourn. Slow move.
Second.
Motion is a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Hearing none, motions adjourned, eighteen forty five.